Okay.
Give me. A thumbs up.
All set.
All right. Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order on September the 20th at 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting protocols and procedures. Would you please do that?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For those public attendees who wish to make public comment via Zoom, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to proceed to the pledge of allegiance.
President Haines, we need to call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Okay. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Joshua Elizondo.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Jelena Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hull.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Shabazian. Roy Shabazian, I thought I saw you. Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Blas Villa Lobos.
Here.
Joseph Williams. We have Coram President Haines.
Thank you, and I see that Roy Shabazian is with us. You can note him as being present, please.
I am. This is Felicia Escobar Correa. I could not hear you earlier, but hopefully you all could see that I'm on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm really glad that our Board of Trustees is here today with us. So with that, can we now proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance? And I've asked trustee Epstein to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. What I'd like, everyone has had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any questions? Or is there something that needs to be moved? And this is an opportunity to do that. I do not see any hands raised. So what I would like to do, I'm going, well, I am going to take my report and move it behind our CEO's report. Would President Minion, please provide us with her report this morning?
Yes. Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I hope you all had wonderful summers, and for those on traditional college campuses, I share their excitement for the start of the fall. From technology and HR to the student-facing staff and faculty, Calbright is continuing to grow as a part of our long-term plan to expand operational capacity. This morning, I am pleased to bring you to the board 11 candidates, including five, yes, you can count them, five, new student support specialists who will join the Student Services and Success Team. And today, we have another first for Calbright. I'm seeking approval for our first-ever Chief Product Officer, who will lead our technology team and guide our technical development for the years ahead. This is not a typical leadership position across higher education, and we've talked about that before. I'd like to pause for a moment to think about and to talk about what product actually means for Calbright, because it's a role, it has a role as an engine that propels us towards building that new kind of educational model. Today, Calbright's roughly 1,250 students that hail from 45 out of 58 counties in California. And though life in San Diego may be different than Siskiyou County, many of our students are bringing with them a very shared set of experiences and really a shared set of goals. The overwhelming majority are either unemployed or they're working part-time. One in three, we know, are caring for a family, and many of them have had mixed experiences with education in the past. It's very humbling that they have chosen Calbright as a place where they feel comfortable to be vulnerable and to really take that risk of returning to school. Ultimately, what our product is, is building that college with equity and our students at the center of the design. To do this, we need platforms and experiences that foster a welcoming environment and that also support asynchronous learning. We also need to cultivate an atmosphere in which student feedback is more quickly iterated into our workflows, where student questions are answered and anticipated before they're asked, and where learners feel really empowered to access services and to participate fully in events and activities. We need to construct a very seamless set of systems and integrations that keeps our curriculum at our students' fingertips and their lessons accessible and easy to navigate. This is work that's critical because our student body is unique, because 92% of our learners are 25 years or older, and the majority identify as members of a BIPOC community. You know, at a traditional institution, we know these to be the students who are not likely seeing the opportunity to attend office hours or not seeking out a counselor or support services. And though we're still building and iterating and improving, we're very encouraged. We know we're on the right track because of the statistics from the recent student surveys. For us, we learned that first 90% of students shared that the reason that they enrolled in Calbright was because of the model. 69% of respondents shared that they sought out student support, their academic success counselor. 74% agreed and or strongly agreed that their instructor and that interaction helped them succeed in their asynchronous program. So for us to summarize this, in a digital environment where we don't have the traditional class convenings, the overwhelming majority of Calbright students have had an engagement with our support services and directly with instructors. So as a kind of product-led organization, it's very critical that that student experience continues to lead, that our college operates with that collective priority to facilitate student success. And it's why at every opportunity, we ask, how is this new project or endeavor nurturing or empowering our learners? You know, we rarely see, and I've mentioned this before, non-traditional students that are the subject of data-driven solutions that support their success. So we're very excited by these indicators of progress and by our notable momentum as we are continuing to grow and build and reimagine what that opportunity through education and training can look like here in California. Thank you to President Haines, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. I'm going to try to make my report short, but I do want to, I want to frame my discussion around what's happening here with close to 400 African-descended Californians, for the most part. We are talking about redesigning, redesigning the student experience from a framework of it being African-centered, based on culture, curriculum, and pedagogy. It is clear that many of our programs are not African-centered. They do not reflect us. They are Euro-centered. And no matter what we do, in many cases, our students know and they tell us that they are not, they are not represented. They're not getting what they need. And what I would say to us as Calbright trustees is, we are actually in this work of redesigning. Now, it may not be specifically for African-descended students, but we are designing system-wide how we should be working that is flexible, that represents the needs of our students, be they adults or be they right out of college. One of the, one of the things that, as our president was speaking, was it really about how we are selecting and choosing our student success team and how they will interface and interact with those that they are being hired to help, to support, to figure out where those pain points are so that we don't lose them. That is still the work of the system. But we are, I believe that this college is leading the way in many ways that we can't even begin to explain right now. I just got out of a meeting, and one of the things that the, those who are Ghanaians, and they were in this, in this work group as well, one of the things they, we were, they were asked by us, how do they work within their system? Now, I understand that their system is still based on colonial Great Britain, and they need to move away from that, and they know they do. But one of the things they did say was, in that educational experience, career exploration is pushed down much lower, and that they, that when they graduate from their high school, they have an idea of what they want to do. They, folks have worked with them. That is not a system that exists here or in the United States. And that's also the work that we need, we need to do as well. So I just want to leave us with that, that there are cross-currents in the work that we're doing as trustees on Calbright, that the work that's being done within the Board of Governors and that the work that is being done relative to our college campuses, on those campuses. That work has both, both a California need, but it also has a national need. And what I want to say to you, it has an international need as well. So with that, I'll close with that and say that I'm happy to be in Ghana, having these discussions, being a part of the discussions, but I'm also happy to be with you this morning to share sort of my excitement today. So with that, we are going to move into closed session. You have a link, and I'm going to make my, do my best to get in there with you. So we're going to move into closed session. Thank you.
Excuse me, President Haines.
Yes. Oh, I didn't say what I was supposed to do. So can I say it with them? Can I say it without the board?
I think, yes, if there's any public comment on the closed session items.
So the board will discuss three items in closed session. Item 2.1, which is a conference with the labor negotiator. Item 2.2, public employee discipline dismissal and release. And item 2.3, public employment, chief product officer. And I'm, is there any public comment on any of the closed session items? Is there?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Okay, then I release all to go into, into closed session. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. The, there was, we've just come from closed session. There is no report out. We are now moving into section three of the agenda. This is our consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? I see no hands raised. So given that, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Then may I get a motion and a second to approve the consent.
So moved. So moved.
Second, we have Anderson moved, and we have Villa Lobos, who's second. Could you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull. Kevin?
Sorry, is on mute. Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Blas Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you. We're now moving into our action agenda. 4.1 is the 2022-24 fiscal year, years, Salesforce, Salesforce Data Products and Services. And we have Brenda, Brendan, sorry, O'Callaghan presenting. Brendan?
Good morning, Vice President Costa, or President, sorry, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and members of the board. So this is a very standard order form we've done in years past. And I'm seeking board approval because what we are trying to do is align all of our contracts as best we can with our fiscal year. And with that, Salesforce would prefer to operate in a 12-month calendar. And so what this item is, is basically the permission to order our Salesforce products through the end of our current fiscal year, and then also for the following fiscal year, for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. And Salesforce is an integral part of our systems. It's how we track the student journey. It's how we track our marketing efficacy. It's how we engage with a lot of our students through email platforms and such. So it's really a key part of our, you know, of our, of our systems and operations. And so what I'm asking, seeking for is $196,000. And again, that's, that's through not this coming June, but the following June, June 2024. And then in addition to that, what I'm asking for is about $14,000 in additional funds. Should we have a need to increase the amount of student licenses that we have? We would utilize those funds there. I just want to avoid a situation where we, you know, enrollment continues to grow, and we find ourselves meeting the student licenses, and it's, you know, three weeks before a board meeting, and we can't, we can't get here for approval. So that is, that is this item in a nutshell.
Thank you. Are there board member questions? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion and a second to approve this item?
Aguinaldo, I'll move.
I'll second.
So we have Aguinaldo moving and Perry seconding. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein. Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes. Pam? We lost Pam. Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian. Roy?
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Blas Villa Lobos.
Yes.
I'm just looking for Pam. Pam, are you there?
Terry, President Haines has dropped off the line.
Okay. Motion carries, President Haines.
Well, I guess until Pam gets here, finally, the vice president is. We need a public comment on the items here. Are we good?
No, there was no public comment. So we're up to the Chief Financial Officer item.
Chief Product Officer.
I'm sorry, the Chief Product Officer. Apologize.
I wonder if Amy is dropping off as well.
It does look like Vice President Costa has also froze as well. Though we may have to just wait a moment, but let me see if I can get one of them on the line.
Who's third in line?
I was gonna say, clearly, we need to establish an order of succession that we do not have.
I vote Jennifer Perry.
Free for all. Thanks, Darius.
Nancy Pelosi.
I have a red suit, so I think it should be me. And Nancy Pelosi read suit, so I second Darius's nomination.
Yes. Tom Epstein.
If we don't have a president or a vice president, goes to past president.
That's what I think. Yeah, Tom Epstein.
Well, let's have someone present the Chief Product Officer item.
Go for it, Tom.
No, we, I'm asking the staff to present the Chief Product Officer item.
This is Amy. Sorry, my computer died. I'm back on.
Amy, I am too. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yep, we got you.
Okay, I don't know where we are in the process, but there was something that I was supposed to read relative to this particular approval. Joe?
So.
Did I get it now? Sorry.
So, good morning, President Haines, Vice President Costa, members of the board. Today, we're bringing forward a candidate for our very first Chief Product Officer for your consideration. Vivek Bhaius is a seasoned product management, development, and technology leader in his current role at Partha Technologies. Vivek leads the product and engineering operations as the Chief Product and Technology Officer. In recent years, Vivek has led product vision, roadmap, and delivery of several mobile and web-based products which serve the needs of Partha's North America public sector clients. Prior to Partha, Vivek led roles of increasing responsibility at Accenture, where he managed large mission-critical programs to service Accenture's public and private sector clients. This includes serving the global sales operations lead of the Accenture Cisco Business Group. Vivek learned the art of software design and development while working at Hewlett-Packard as the Hewlett-Packard OpenView Network Management Software Suite with, which helped clients manage large distributed computer networks. Vivek holds a master's in computer engineering from Purdue University, West Lafayette, Indiana. And we're so happy to recommend Vivek to you for consideration to be the new Chief Product Officer.
Thank you for that. Okay. Is there any questions relative to this particular item from our board members? Any discussion? Nothing? Okay, good. Then with that, is there any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment, but I wanted to remind you to read.
Read the terms, read the terms. Okay, I will, now, I will now read the terms of the agreement. A three-year term beginning on October the 10th, 2022, and a base salary of $240,016.80 each year. A yearly salary adjustment beginning on October the 10th, 2023, in the amount equal to the actual funded cost of living adjustment for Cal California Community Colleges. An annual bonus of maximum us, obtain a satisfactory performance evaluation, and meet performance goals and objectives. Membership in CalPERS and related employer contribution as set by the statute and health benefits as currently offered to current administrative employees. Leave rights consistent with other Calbright administrative employees. So now that I've read that, are there any comments or questions from our Board of Trustees? Seeing none, is there any public commentary?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
All right, thank you. Then can I get a motion and a second to approve this item?
Aguinaldo, second.
Anderson moved. Aguinaldo seconds. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo. Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
And Blas Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you. We're now into information and reports. The first item is 5.1, Conflict of Interest Code and Fair Political Practices Commission update. And we have Cindy Smith from F3 presenting.
Thank you and good morning, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and trustees. Today, I'm here to provide an update regarding Calbright's efforts to establish its Conflict of Interest Code, which governs the filing of Fair Political Practices Commission Statements of Economic Interest, otherwise known as Form 700. Calbright, through its legal counsel, began working on its Conflict of Interest Code in April of 2019, when it reached out to the FPPC about establishing a Conflict of Interest Code for the new entity that was Calbright. The question that arose concerned how to classify Calbright, either as a state agency or a local agency, which determines the process for approving a Conflict of Interest Code and which entity is responsible for receiving completed Form 700. The FPPC initially determined that Calbright is a state agency rather than a local agency. Fact of the matter is, Calbright is not a state agency, so pursuant to its authorization statutes, Calbright is a community college and a district, which the Political Reform Act defines as a local government agency. What makes it slightly confusing is that we happen to have statewide jurisdiction. So shortly after the pandemic and lockdowns began, Calbright began conferring with FPPC General Counsel's Office on Calbright's agency designation, and this has continued up until the present day. Most recently, in March of 2022, Calbright provided a detailed analysis to the FPPC supporting Calbright's position that it is a local agency with multi-county jurisdiction rather than a state agency. The FPPC responded in July 2022, citing to a regulation that is just simply not applicable to the analysis. Thus, we responded back in August of 2022, just last month, providing additional analysis supporting our position. We have not yet received a response from the FPPC regarding our most recent correspondence. We intend to contact and request a meeting with FPPC's General Counsel to discuss this matter and hopefully resolve it so that Calbright can move forward with its Conflict of Interest Code. If such efforts are not successful by the end of the calendar year, then we intend to move forward with Calbright's Conflict of Interest Code with the goal of having it in place prior to the next Statement of Economic Interest Form deadline of April 1st of 2023. So that is an overview of how we got where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. So we're going to open it up to board discussion. Are there any questions? Okay, I don't, I don't see any questions.
I do, sorry.
Okay.
President Haines, Hildegard Aguinaldo submitted a question in the chat asking if our position, are we a local agency or a statewide agency? Our position is that we are a local agency with multi-county jurisdiction as opposed to a state agency. That is our position. Thanks. Sorry, Miss App.
Appreciate that. Other questions? So what I, what I would, then what I would hope is that you keep us abreast as you can relative to this, this particular issue, and I'm hoping that we can stay on the timeline that you're suggesting and have some type of resolution, even if it's an interim resolution. I know that sometimes we, that sometimes, in many cases, it's very difficult to have communications with state agencies, but I know that you're trying hard and that this will ultimately be resolved, because it's an important issue that we need to make certain that it gets resolved in the right way. So with that, is there any public comments? Um, so with that, um, is there any public comment on this particular issue?
There was no public comment, President Haines.
Um, this is an information item, and so we're, uh, we're going to move to five point two, which is a review and discussion of the draft Board of Trustees and Executive Committee meeting schedule um, for twenty twenty-three, and we have, um, uh, I'm sorry, Chief of Staff, Carmen Drummond presenting on this item.
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and Board of Trustees. As you all may recall, each fall, the board adopts a schedule of Board of Trustees and Executive Committee meeting dates that coincide with the Board of Governors meeting schedule. The meetings of the full board generally occur on the Tuesday of every other month, starting in January, while the executive committee meeting dates occur on the third week of the months when the Board of Trustees do not meet. The tentative schedule before you is being presented for discussion. The schedule will be presented, um, to the board for adoption at the upcoming meeting on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, which is the Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting.
Are there questions relative to, um, um, the calendar and how it's set now? Um, Tom?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have a question. The, um, I'm a little confused by the executive committee, um, meeting schedule, which sometimes, um, is three weeks after the board meeting and five weeks before the next one, and, um, started at the February meeting is like that, the June meeting, um, and the August meeting, and I'm, I'm curious why we wouldn't try to, uh, schedule it every four weeks rather than three and five. Um, and, uh, so I just wanted an explanation for that.
Um, I can certainly, um, I'm assuming for some of these dates, it could be that we may be trying to avoid holidays um, or things like that, that could coincide with some of the dates. But the schedule is really ultimately up to us, so if we want to explore consistency around the third or fourth week, we can certainly do that. So this is, this is ultimately up to us in terms of what we want to set those dates as.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any holidays, um, that conflict on these Wednesdays, and, and it just seems to me for the staff's benefit, it would be better to have four weeks in between meetings instead of three and five, and, um, and I just think it's, you know, I just think it's a better way to run a railroad, if you will. Um, so I would recommend moving the February one to the twenty-second, moving the, the June one to the twenty-first and the, uh, August one to the twenty-third. Uh, and, and, uh, to keep that more, that more balanced schedule.
Okay, great. So if, if no other trustees oppose, I will make those, those.
So this is, this is Pam. What I would, what I would ask us to do in that case, because we have a visual and, and there may be some of, I know what I did was I went through my entire calendar and there, I had no conflicts. So in order to give us time to look at our calendars now before we have to vote on it, um, then I would ask us to do that and then in some way get back to Carmen relative to that, because it's, it's a calendar that's developed on behalf of all of us. Um, and so that therefore staff will know if there are any, any big conflicts relative to that. Um, any other questions?
This, this doesn't require a vote. This is an information item, apparently, and so, yeah, so this, so, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think it makes sense.
So it's an information item, and I believe though, I believe that we actually vote on the final one, but I, I could be wrong. My memory maybe not served well.
That's correct. In October, you all vote to adopt this schedule, so that is why we're bringing it here, um, in September, so that you all can take a look at the dates. What we'll do is we'll adjust those three months. But, um, in the meantime, if folks can explore their calendars to make sure that there's no conflicts before we bring this back in October, that would be, would be much appreciated.
And so if you, I did not write those dates down that are different, so either will you send us a, another adjusted calendar so that we can actually see it, or at least give us the date so that we can cross-reference it to make certain that, um, we're all on the same page before we, before we, uh, make the next meeting.
Yes, I will work with our board liaison to make those adjustments and to get an email out to you all with the updated.
We, I'm sure we all appreciate that. Other questions or concerns around the calendar? Okay, um, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
And this is not, um, this is not an action item. There's some direction that went with it, but no, no action has to be taken here. And then our last, um, information item is five point three, which is the reports on contracts and purchases. Um, Carmen, you, this is your item to explain or?
Yes. What have you? Thank you, President Haines. There are four contracts or amendments executed in August of twenty twenty-two and a summary of purchases in August that total seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions from board members? Um, I'm not seeing any, um, hands raised. Speak up if that be the, not be the case. Um, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Thank you. Um, we're now going to move into, um, public, I'm sorry, I take that back, um, reports from constituencies, the Calbright Academic Senate Report. I see that there's no report this month. Um, I also see that there's no report from Faculty Association. Um, we do, um, have a report from the California School Employees Association, and that's Anya Elder.
Hi, good morning. Uh, good morning. Good morning, President Haines and Vice President Costa and members of the board. I'm here, uh, happy to be here today, uh, representing the CSCA Chapter Fifty-three as the chapter president. Um, and I have some updates for negotiations today that I'd like to share with you. First, I want to start off on a very positive note. We have made genuine progress in negotiations. We've reached agreement on at least five major topics from safety to grievance procedures. And so we are really thankful for the attentive work of Calbright's bargaining team led by the VP of Human Resources and the willingness to engage in hard discussions about what sort of workplace we want to build at Calbright. It feels like for the most part, we are moving forward in partnership through this process, and everyone should be commended for the work that they're doing, for the hard work that they're doing. We've regained some optimism about bargaining despite the initial delays in recognizing our union and getting to the bargaining table. Despite optimism, however, we do have a lot more work to do. And I want to bring your attention to an area of concern for us, and that is classified turnover. So since our union was formally recognized six months ago, a quarter of our bargaining unit has turned over. If this pace continues, Calbright's annual turnover rate among classified staff will be fifty percent or more. It's exceedingly difficult to build institutional knowledge and remain fully focused on our mission and the success of our students with such a high turnover. As you can imagine, this leads to additional work for classified staff. It stretches, it stretches us thin because of the vacancies. And this does not only impact classified employees, but it also, uh, does impact other classifications in the college at whole. Ultimately, this could impact our student's success and the growth of the organization, so we are very concerned. We have made some phenomenal gains, and we want to make sure that we can sustain them by slowing the loss of classified employees. An annual turnover rate of fifty percent would put us well over double the national average for employee turnover. So we want to continue to work with Calbright Management and the board to address the root causes of turnover for classified employees. We are cautiously optimistic about the outcome of our ongoing negotiations. Uh, but I must emphasize the importance of meeting some of the classified staff's immediate needs as soon as possible. As a reminder, classified workers have seen a significant decrease in wages due to historic inflation and increase in healthcare costs, and they are among the lowest paid across the college. Despite all that, they continue to be the backbone here at Calbright. We've made several proposals we believe would help stem turnover as we work diligently towards negotiating a, an entire contract. Two of the most important, addressing the increase in costs of healthcare for a number of our members and providing us a one-time payment equal to that, what would, which was previously, uh, provided to the faculty have not yet been agreed to by Calbright. I ask that you strongly consider these proposals today in the context of our significant turnover and historic inflation. While Calbright classified staff ultimately needs a complete union contract, which we are all working diligently to complete our immediate needs, proposals will go a long way, we believe, in bridging the gap for the time being. So, thank you, uh, thank you, the board, again, for your time and attention to these matters. And as always, you can reach out to me with any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you. Um, our next item is seven point one, which is public forum. Do we have, um, those, um, of the public who are interested in, in, um, speaking to the, to the, the Board of Trustees?
There is no public comment or any raised hands, President Haines.
Thank you. So, um, I, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. I want to thank everyone for hanging in there with me. It has been my honor and my pleasure to be doing this from Ghana. I know there were a couple of glitches, but we, we, we did it and you, and, and you were there when I turned on and we figured it out. So thank you so much, and I'll see you on the other side of the Atlantic Ocean sometime next week. Bye-bye.
Bye. Bye.